Looks like you have it.
Yeah, we're just about done here. I just have to mute it quick. One second. Okay, I'm ready to go.
All right, I'd like to call the order, the October 20th, 2020 Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission Regular Meeting. We'll start off with a roll call. Jamie, can you do the roll call?
Yes. Chair Steenblock, Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Steenblock, Commissioner Ramseth.
Here.
Commissioner Morehead.
Here.
Commissioner Guyer.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
All right, next we'll look to approve the agenda, making an amendment for regular right agenda item number five A, moving that to C and moving the other two up.
A motion, we approve the agenda with the recommendation changes.
Second.
We're hearing a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the agenda? Hearing no discussion, we'll just take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramseth.
Hi.
Commissioner Morehead.
Hi.
Commissioner Guyer.
Hi.
All right, next on the agenda, open forum, do we have anyone, Jamie?
We do not have any open forum submissions for tonight.
Okay, let's move on to regular agenda item A, which will be now Bay Park Equipment Color.
All right, so members of the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, given that we had a meeting tonight, I thought it'd include you guys in some discussion and selection of the color scheme and palette for the new equipment for Bay Park. So just looking for some direction and we can go through kind of quickly here through the different, there's different color palettes, we can easily, you know, if there's one that stands out to you. But we do need to make some choices on what we would like for the colors for that park, the decks, the posts, plastic pieces, railings, tables, and then the belt swings. So just wanted you guys to have this final step in the process since something that we're working on. So if you have any open up for discussion, then ultimately end with a conclusion of what colors we want for the equipment for Bay Park. So with that, if you guys, if anyone has anything that stands out or any strong opinions, we'll turn it over to the commission at this time.
Just looking at them for a minute here, I can't have any green because it's too close to the Green Park.
Yeah, and I know we have a lot of the Green Parks and someone, I think there's a, someone says like the Blue Park or the Dragon Park, so we, you know, different and, and that's why I thought we could kind of look it over and see what you guys think. It is in a, you know, little residential areas, so probably nothing too loud, too bright and crazy maybe, but Karen, did you have anything that caught your eye? Any certain color palette or?
Well, I'm just looking at them, I like dark blue, I also like red, but you're talking about a.
Jamie, how, Jamie, how soon do we have to make this decision? Does that have to be done tonight?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to send in the purchase order by the end of the month, so looking to just decide on the colors tonight.
Okay, I'm wondering if it wouldn't have been good to maybe throw a poll out. Do you think you would have gotten enough participate, you know, participation?
I'm not sure with, I mean, possibly, I'm not certain with that neighborhood, but you know, I guess the only other thing is if we, you know, we probably could wait for our special meeting. But, you know, if we haven't, if there's any other commissioner thoughts before we, you know, table it to approve it. Meaning, I just don't want to delay.
Too kind of a neat brown to a neat brown or, and they move up and down, so I can only see them.
Are you, are you looking at the screen right now, Karen?
I am, and there's one purple, then kind of light whitish and then kind of brown. And there was another brown one down further that I can't see on the screen right now. There you go, keep going. Yeah, that one right there.
Let's, let's start with this, um, well, we know, what we do know is that the ADA swing is going to be gray. So is there, you know, do you just want to go with the standard black swing? For the belt swings, is anyone, you know, we're going to have the gray.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty standard, and then if we have to get a replacement, that's easy. So we'll just, we'll, we'll do that, we'll do the black. This belt swing will be black and then we'll have a gray ADA swing. I think, let's talk about picnic tables last because that's fairly easy. But again, then, so really you're looking at the plastic components and then the posts and railings. The decks are like the, the platform that you stand on. So, you know, obviously you're going to want a darker color.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we've got gray and black, like this urban design is kind of, you know, like, simple.
Yeah, that one's striking out, I mean, I mean, that one looks good.
You know, because on that would kind of, that would go with the swing, the belt swings and the gray ADA swing.
Yeah, the only thing, the red top, you know, that might fade quickly. I don't know what kind of fade warranty they have on those tops.
Yeah, and we, and so let me just go flip over here. So we don't have a top on ours. So this is our design, so just kind of, just to give you guys, so the, the plat, the decks are these, what you see in brown here, and all of the, the metal railings, the slide is like the plastic piece. So I think just in gen, you know, kind of that high level, like what's the color schematic? So if we went with like that gray, let me just pull that back up here, I'm sorry, one second here, I got a lot of screens open. So, you know, if it's like a dark gray deck with a gray slide with black posts, then let's see, what are we missing then?
Top.
If you like that kind of simple color schematic, I know we have, like at Fenway Park, we, which is, you know, plenty far away, we do have like some red and black there, but not very much of it, so.
You know, the slides, a lighter color on the slides makes them cooler to slide on. Some of the dark, dark colors get hot.
It's a good point.
Yeah, so the plastic would be all kind of like these components right up here, the slide feature and probably this panel here, and then the posts obviously are the, there's like six or eight of those, those, you know, that we put into the ground, and then any kind of railings would be, you know, obviously these kind of components here, that, the metal components.
I'm not sold into this, but how about the light tan slide and stops and then the rest dark? I don't know. I don't. If you have to go with the gray and the black, it's, it's hard to choose another color, but Betty, you're the, you're the Swingman Park person.
I like the suggestion so far. I think it needs some color.
Yeah.
Somewhere, so wherever we can put a little color.
So what about like the railings? So if you look at this one, you got the gray side with the black posts. And then the, the deck would be whether it's dark gray or some, you know, maybe it's like the metallic gray. Some form of dark shade, but then you could do the color with some of those railings to add that color in there. So then again, going to here, so all of these components here, the railings could be that pop of color.
Okay.
If you do like the plastics and the decks more of like that gray, I, I think the black post would be nice. Or could look nice because then you go, goes with any color really.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry about that. But then see here, you know, then they did all their railings a different color. So is there any colors that like to add that pop of color if we that stands out to anybody? So.
Well, I do not claim to be a designer, right? This was a tough one, it's, you know, I wish we had a tool that we could, could build it and see it.
Right, exactly. That would help.
We had to commit to it, to be honest.
Well, let, you know, what, why don't we do this? I can check with, um, let's get through some, some ideas and then I'll see what I can do with our, with little types to get some mockups and maybe we can send it over via email and, and I'll check with her on the timeline because I know, I know that maybe they could start the production and I don't know that they need that color right away, but I'll, I'll have to check with her and see. We do have a special meeting slated for, let me pull it up here, the end of November, and we really could look at bumping that up to, you know, if we needed to, maybe we can move that up a week or so. I don't want you to feel rushed into a decision on the color. I don't want you to be, feel comfortable with it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really like the idea of maybe getting some feedback, community, community feedback.
Okay.
But I'm not gonna be able to make that decision, I guess. Well, do we need to make an action on that then? And go through that, or we, can we just table that?
Well, if you don't, if we want, I would probably suggest tabling this item, then I'll talk to the company tomorrow just to see our drop dead for like getting the purchase order in. And if, if we need to bump up a meeting, even if it's like a week or so, just to jump on a Zoom call quick to make a final determination on this, I think that would be fine. So just, I'll make sure we don't miss the deadline. But then if we, if, it sounds like you're looking for a little more visual.
Well, I am, but I'm just one of us, so what, what, I, I'm not seeing everyone on the screen, do we all?
Let's see.
Any other thoughts?
I'd like to drive around there again, I'm just, just to see the surroundings, maybe something will pop out, but otherwise I'm not going to take, you know, I'm not real adamant about any of them, but.
Okay.
As long as we have some color in there somewhere. I'm not married to any of them.
Doug, do you have any thoughts, comment? Do you want to?
Well, I, I really don't have any preference on it. I think a little bit of color and a lighter slide would be good. My granddaughter's favorite color is purple, so you might want to take that into consideration.
It's not a bad color.
I don't want to overthink it, but I also want to make sure, I mean, this is going to be there for a long time, that make sure it's something that you guys are all happy with and that fits the neighborhood and something different, I would, you know, we have, a lot of our parks do have a lot of that forest green, dark green, natural colors, so just some thoughts, if you want to keep that or if you want to do something different. So if you want, if, you know, there's a couple options, I guess, it's either, I guess the main option I'm kind of feeling is table it, so I can see if we can get a few mockups with the darker gray and black posts and decks, and then a couple different color options. And then see if we have some time to put something out on Nextdoor app or Facebook to get some feedback.
Yeah, and if you could, maybe.
Go that route if we can manage it timeline wise.
That'd be great if we could, and then we can get Terry, Jason and Tim's thoughts on it as well.
Okay, let's do that then, so just we can tape, motion to table, and then I'll talk to the company tomorrow and just find out my drop dead deadline on that, and we may just need to do a quick meeting to jump, jump on quick and figure that out and approve something. Is that fair with everybody?
I'm older than that.
Do we have to have a special meeting? Couldn't you just send it out and we can just email back what we thought and you go with the majority or the best? I mean, I don't know if that we all have to gather, gather together.
I mean, it's up to, I guess it's up to you, you know, I don't know that we needed to consensus on it. I, I was thinking that we should probably have everyone kind of agree to the same, this, you know, agree to it unless that's something via email. So I'll just have to check if that's something if we can, and I don't know, Kathy, do you know if we can do any form of like email vote on anything, or is this just a consensus thing via email? Do you have any thoughts on? Robert's rules around that, or I don't want to turn a simple thing into, you know, too difficult of a thing.
Yeah, I. Not a hundred, I, this is just, this is not like a rocket science decision here, you know, it's not a, not a major, not a major business decision, it's just deciding on a color.
Right, it doesn't affect cost.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, I think you're, you know, it's already approved. I don't think that you need to have a, you know, a formal vote. I think, I think you've talked already about potential color combinations and maybe just trying to see them visually.
Right.
And then, you know, maybe just a couple of combinations and then choose whichever one you think is best.
And if we don't like it, Jamie, we'll just go and repaint it, it'll be fine.
All right, so we, let's just.
Be voluntary.
Motion to table and resolve via email or just to have, or motion to recommend staff make final determination. After Parks Commission feedback.
That, that works.
All right.
Do we have, does someone want to make that motion?
I move that we review some colors by email, get back to Jamie, and then she will make a final decision.
I can second that motion. I think we have to include maybe table it also or not.
Well, we're not going to bring it back for action, so I, we don't need to table it, we're just gonna move to review via email.
Well, and I'll second that motion as stated.
And hearing a motion in a second, any more discussion? Have a, take a roll call vote, Jamie.
Yep, Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramseth.
Hi.
Commissioner More, Morehead.
Hi.
Commissioner Guyer.
Hi.
All right, moving on. Next item is the Magical Park Subscription.
All right, so members of the Parks and Lakes Commission, included in the packet was some information about Magical Park, which is a digital app, augmented reality game that towards youth, generally ages about six to 12. And we've talked about this previously, but we've been looking for different activities that we could offer in the community that could allow for social distancing, people to do within their household or families, kind of on their own time. And one of our items in our 10-year strategic or planning session is the use of technology, so with that, this company based out of New Zealand, we, I connected with them and they did set us up for a test run, which all of you are aware of, and most of you participated in the test run. I included in the packet some of the feedback that I gathered from all of the commissioners who did test this out with family or friends at the park, Summerfield Park in town. So tonight, we, you know, we talked about seeing if we wanted to pay for a subscription to extend this out to the community. Up until now, this has just been a test run just for city staff and commissioners, has not been made public or aware to the public that this is, you know, an active item. So with that, we are going to look at seeing if the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission would like to move forward with a subscription and I included the pricing piece in here, so you can do one week for $750, you can do a pop-up for three months, which is $999, and that's per park. So, so with that, we're, we are going to decide tonight if that's something that we still implement for this year and seeking, looking for a discussion and approval, if you do want to move forward with a subscription to the Magical Park app for this year. I will say weather may be a factor in this decision tonight.
So. I have a question, Jamie.
Yes.
Um, and I know you got my feedback, but I wonder if, so the, the concern I had, I, the girls loved it. I took three of them, age nine, 10 and 11. They loved it, they each played two games, they had a great time, they gave it thumbs up. But two times it took the kids out of the park. And so that was a concern, one time it was a, to across the street, and another time it was into the town hall. Now, I have an Android, so maybe it was my, but I have to assume that many people aren't going to have iPhones.
Right.
So I'm just wondering how they would address that. That was really my biggest concern.
Yeah, and I share that same concern, and they can set, they can readjust the parameters and shorten that zone. I found Summerfield Park was a good park because there's a lot of room, but you know, maybe, maybe we would need even more space, you know, and I originally considered Fenway Park, but then I also didn't want to be in conflict with youth athletics, you know, football practice or what have you, but those three football fields would be great to have this up and running because you don't have as many perimeter issues, you know, with streets or roads or anything like that. So, you know, we certainly could adjust the parameters at Summerfield or consider Fenway.
I liked Summerfield, it was a beautiful park, beautiful park.
Yeah, and some of the feedback too, and I kind of experienced this as well as, you know, you played for a little bit, like, I think it's really the six years and older because some of the younger kids just wanted to do the park and the playground, so. So I think, you know, that mark, that target age is, it's really to kind of get, you know, people out and moving around or get them to the park, and that's one of the benefits of that is it gets in there. And then they see, oh, there's a park here, and then they play the game for a little while, and then they go use the playground, so it kind of keeps, gets in there and keeps in there longer. You know, I guess with the weather and the, for the rest of this year, that might be not a great idea to jump into a subscription, so maybe this is something that we, we tested it and just have some further future conversation, maybe for in the spring when we can evaluate it a little further with some of those items to, to look at.
Yeah, I agree.
I appreciate that because I had different, I didn't send my comment in because it was so late, it took me three times to get out there and have the phone work and have it be where I could judge what we thought of it. The two that I took out there were 11 and 13, and they weren't impressed. They said it was kind of fun, but as you said, Jamie, they looked around, they said, I've never been to this park. And so they started playing at the park, and one of them, I don't which one it was, said they thought there would be a problem because some of their friends would not have the proper phone or the proper data or whatever else they were telling me you need to do to check into this thing. And they thought that would be not fair to kids that didn't get it or couldn't get to that particular park. So they were thinking it was more of an issue of.
Yeah. Stability.
Yeah.
Well, I had a little, a four and a half year old who was pretty tech savvy, and he thought that the, the slide was a lot more fun.
Yeah.
Well, like you said, Jamie, I think mine too, they, they played the game and they played on the playground, then they came back and played the game again, so they kind of, it was just another bounce back and forth. But I would agree that we should wait till spring.
Yeah, and it might just be something, you know, maybe in the spring, it's another conversation, and we find someone who's, you know, for a week over tied into an event is one of the activities to do, but it's maybe not, you know, we start with something like that next year. In the spring, we can work through some of the additional details on the perimeters that are set up, maybe get some more feedback or do another test run in the spring with a maybe a little bit more targeted audience of six to 12-year-olds. If, you know, we pay for a week to see how people like it, you know, and just, and, and go with that in the spring, but I think weather is playing a big factor, and I think there are a few more things to, to work through. But augmented reality, it's kind of like the Pokemon Go, I mean, I see people, I see adults playing that every single day, you know, out at our parks and they're, it's actually a really big thing that I, it's just nothing that I'm, you know, involved with, but they have a lot of fun and it, they, it gets some people walking and miles just to go find all these, you know, creatures and features and whatnot, so it's, it's really a unique thing and it hits a different demographic, so I think it's an interesting item. So I guess at this point, it sounds like we would not, a motion to not proceed with a subscription this year and reconsider next year. If that's what the groups looking.
Yeah, I had a, I had this similar experience with my eight-year-old, he was more interested in playing Pokemon Go than, than, than this one, so.
Okay. Karen?
Pardon me?
Were you making a motion?
Oh, yeah, I can make a motion that we put that particular idea on hold till the spring and do some more investigating as far as creating it for our parks as far as the boundaries are concerned, and also give us time to consider how in the world we're going to get this information out to the people, because once it's out, it's expensive to have there. And so we'd want to do a real promotional piece that it's coming and how to use it and all of that, but that's a long motion. I guess I can just make the motion that we wait till spring.
I needed a little humor today, Karen, thank you for that.
I'll second the shorter motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, any more discussion? Or we can do a roll call vote, Jamie?
I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramseth.
Hi.
Commissioner Morehead.
Hi.
Commissioner Guyer.
Hi.
All right.
All right, it looks like we have our guest here, so we can move to item C on the regular agenda, is that right, Jamie? Proposal for Shield.
That is, that's correct. So we have Donovan Hart, our zoning administrator here with the City of Forest Lake, and a guest Glenn Berkman. And I'm going to turn this over to Donovan, he's going to walk through this agenda item regarding a proposal for, for like park sale or park exchange. So with that, Donovan, take the floor.
Thank you, Jamie. I'd like to present the the proposal from a local resident, and I am unable to do a, try again, difficulty sharing the screen here.
Need to put up the packet materials, Donovan, just.
I, I want to do a location first. And I have three screens open and it's not giving me. Okay. So this is, this is a property that Parks, Lakes and Trails Commissioners may not know is actually a city park. And this is Shields Lake here. And 1983, there was parkland dedicated. I estimate it's about three, about three and a half acres of high ground. It's shown here right off 208th Street, that's the Green Valley subdivision there to the west. And so these two boxes are actually owned by the city, as dedicated parkland. There is a 66-foot wide easement that comes from the west, along this, also along this, it's now a private driveway, but this is a actual public easement to reach this, this park area, and it's undeveloped, it's vacant, of course, the road is undeveloped, it's something like a Jeep trail. Jamie and I did a field trip there once and saw a lot of trees. Not a lot of, you know, distinguishing features to this. Here's another, another easier way to look at that dedicated park area. And currently, and there's a new owner for this parcel, I believe it's 51 acres. And the new owner, who's represented by Glenn Berkman, who's on the call, seeks to, the proposal is to sell this, this property to the city, and then, then the reason to vacate this easement, shown here, since it would no longer serve a public use to reach this, this, this public land. And so that, that's the proposal, and this is really the first step. Because sale of public land to, to anyone requires a series of official actions and, you know, through, through council, but it being parkland, I wanted to gain a, a recommendation from you commissioners on what would you like to see? I mean, should this land be sold or not? When I, when I went out to the property just recently, what I saw was this, can you still see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's pretty, you know, it, you know, I'm not even sure exactly that's the parkland, you know. There's no, there's no boundary markers for that, but you get the idea. In the summer, I think it's. But you get the idea. Um, in the summer, I think it's wetter, it looked a little bit dry there, but I don't think that's permanent high upland. Mr. Bergman's proposal does indicate it's wetlands and I think that's probably not far off. Meaning, safe to say. Also, I went, um, to another section here. Okay, if you look at the, um, this, this parcel also has a little section that's just south of the Shields Lake Park. It's a city park there in the eastern shore of Shields Lake. Um, it's a pier there, there's a bench, and little, little parking area. Um, and it's actually that little corner is actually discontiguous from the main parcel owned by the Plumbos. And, uh, you know, when I look at that and thinking perhaps, you know, it'd be more favorable to do a swap. Um, it would be, you know, the city would give up, uh, this land, this wetland, which is not so useful for a smaller area. Or it's, I mean, it's high ground, but, um, small geographic area. And I believe the owner could get what they want, which is not to have, um, this park that's, you know, on the, you know, to the west and, um, north of their property and this easement area. But then this, the city could gain some more shoreline. Looking at it, um, again, this is just a quick shot. You can see the boundary marker. Um, I'm standing in the park looking southward. Um, you can see it's, it's treed. Um, you see a little bit of shore there. And but that is, and, um, I did check with the city attorney and there's no legal obstacles to, um, to actually, you know, selling or swapping, um, this parkland. And, uh, sometimes there is with parklands that need to have that, that public park, that park use as part, or else they need to be returned to the original owner. So with that, um, happy taking questions from commissioners.
Donovan, what, uh, are we looking for a motion tonight for? What are, what kind of action are you looking for in this one tonight?
I look for a recommendation, um, from commissioners on this proposal. And, you know, the proposal is to, you know, to, to sell the, for the city to sell the property. Um, I don't think there'd be much cash involved. Um, it's, it's not useful and that's something that I don't think, um, that's undisputed. Um, so I don't think they would gain much of a cash price. I think the real value would come if the land was swapped. And some short, some, you know, eastern Shields Lake shoreline, um, was obtained. And then, of course, the owner gets what they want, um, and the city also, it's something that they could, they could use.
I'm sorry, did I see where that shoreline was?
Yeah, I can, I can show it again.
You can outline Shield Lake's Park too. It's, it must be right next to it.
Um, yeah, so this Shield, yeah, Shields Lake Park is right here. Here's Imperial as it comes down and does that elbow turn.
Yep.
Um, so Shields Park, do you see, is that close enough?
Yep, I've got it now.
Yeah, so I, I didn't check the, I mean, area, I can give you a kind of dimension, some quick dimensions there. Just rough dimensions.
My, my main issue was my screen was covering it, seeing you all. That, the red marker on that before.
Yeah, so that's about, it's around two hundred, um, feet of shoreline along there. You know, roughly.
And use access right there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's actually a little, there's small trails, you know, that people have walked, um, or have, have, you know, just informally used. You can, you can see those.
To get more trails any way we can.
Well, my opinion would be we get land rather than, than the money. And if we could, if, does it absolutely touch Shields Lake Park? There's no land in between that Shields Lake Park and the access that we'd be given, that extra shoreline?
Yeah, there's no, yeah, this is, I mean, this here, here is, here's the, the boundary line right here. So I'm standing in the park right by the, the aerator electrical box.
Okay.
Have been there, um, right, there's a bench, like the rotary. Yeah. So, yeah, that, so there's, there, they are contiguous.
Cause I think we've been talking at different times of kind of getting that and clearing it, making it a little even better than it is. Cause to make it more usable or something, but I, I, that would be my vote or my recommendation.
Goes right, uh, our recommendation goes to the council.
Correct. And then they, they're the ones who make the decision. I think for the sale of public land, I think the EDA might be involved. I mean, there's a whole process and
Yeah.
But this, but I think this would be the first step since it, um, does relate to parkland.
I will, oh, Doug, you're muted.
I think it makes sense if we are, if we can expand the Shields Lake Park with additional shoreline access, then perhaps another fishing pier or, um, picnic area could be added. How, how deep is that little portion? How many feet back from the lake in its deepest part does it go?
You're saying, um, the, the actual park or?
No.
You know, the little triangle that showed?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's, wow. Around, about a hundred and ten feet.
Really? Okay. So that seems to me to be a reasonable size that you can do something with.
Are we talking about a straight out swap? Is that the question?
That's my idea, right? I mean, I, I don't think that, um, you know, if, if we, I mean, I guess it'd be possible to, um, to, uh, you know, I don't think, given the, given the, the, the price of, you know, three and three, three point three acres of wetlands, I'm not sure if there's, I mean, I mean, I think, uh, we'd be getting a real gain, the city would be in a real gain with that and the owner would also be in a gain. It seems to me like it's an equal, equal.
Okay.
Is that a separate piece of property, property that has a tax valuation on it?
No.
No, okay.
Can I interject briefly?
Let's do it.
Obviously, there's a disparity between the size of the parcel that is the park or the mosquito reserve or whatever you want to but it's two hundred feet of shoreline that has enough depth to access it versus a parcel much, many times bigger, which if you check the FEMA maps, it's entirely wet, wetland. Uh, and to do anything with it, if you could do anything with it, given it, the status of the wetlands, the cost of getting access into it, and then trying to, you know, if you did it, you could put a picnic table, but it would have to be on pontoons. It's, it's really unusable land. I, I, I have nothing but respect for the developer who negotiated this parkland dedication many years ago. Um, from my client's perspective, it verges on a public nuisance because you've got a piece of property that is not being used by the city that probably never will be used by the city, that is very difficult. It would be the M and M parcel, mosquitoes and mischief. I mean, and to get to it, you've got an easement that's under the control of the city, but it's undeveloped and it's, it's fairly long. So there's access issues, there's use issues. My client is, basically would like to eliminate a nuisance where you've got uncontrolled public access to a piece of undeveloped property, kind of in the middle of his parcel. And for that, he's got a piece of property that is usable, that to get to it, he's got to come up around from the north from the park. But he sees it as kind of a win-win to eliminate a problem for him and basically add some value to the park for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
I was just going to chime in as well, um, recent conversation around Shields Lake Park with Public Works and the Forest Lake Comfort Lake Watershed District. Um, these are some pictures. I'm just going to show a couple just to talk through. I don't know if they'll help kind of visualize the, um, you know, what we're talking about here, but we were out there, I think it was last fall and talked about, um, one, the, we needed aerator, so that was just recently installed. So this is Shields Lake Park. These are just a few pictures I took that day. You can see that the dock or, um, our little fishing dock here is kind of underwater. Um, this was a picnic table that's, you know, we have this table there, obviously it's a little outdated. I think the parcel we're looking at would be over here, kind of in that wooded area. Is that right, Donovan? I think that so it would be the shoreline extending two hundred feet, kind of right along here, if that helps at all. You know, we'd have some, you know, if we wanted to add, we maybe'd have to clear a little area. Um, but then this, this was in the middle of Shields Lake Park previously, so this was last year. Was the electrical panel, um, and these big bushes. So Donovan, I know you just went out there. This electrical panel is removed now, correct? And there's one more near the property line?
Yeah, yeah. And so, um, this unfortunately, um, if, if this swap occurred, it again would be not at the edge of the property. Right now it is. They were, they were finished installing it when I was out there last week. But, uh, you know, no good deed goes unpunished.
Yeah, so the reason I'm showing this is our conversation and with Public Works and, and we've talked about it a little bit is if we, because this big electrical panel right now in the middle of Shields Lake Park has been relocated with a new aerator, um, that leaves, you know, this, we talked about, we could take this big bush out of here and that really opens up the space at Shields Lake Park. We could put in maybe a little, you know, eventually a little picnic shelter. Um, it makes the park open a little bit more so that, um, you know, it's a little more inviting. Right now it's kind of tucked away and hidden. So we have had conversations between, you know, myself and Public Works and the, and the Watershed District on doing some pretty low cost, um, but effective improvements to Shields Lake Park. And that's something that we can talk about for, for next, um, twenty twenty-one here. So just wanted to give you kind of up to speed or make sure you're aware that Shields Lake Park is a park that we could make some nice improvements to next year within our operating budget for twenty twenty-one. Um, so something that we can do while we're, we're in all of our ten-year plans, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to show you a couple of pictures, at least commissioners who, um, you know, maybe haven't, um, been over here before, but here's the access point, um, so you can bring your boat down. And let's see if I have a couple more. Um, there's a parking lot, so we talk, you know, this is something simple. We could, you know, make this a little nicer if we improve the park. Um, there is planned the Forest Lake Watershed District to, um, look at getting a new fishing dock here and maybe it's even expanded out even more. So a lot of opportunity and I don't, I just thought I'd share that if you weren't aware. Um, but that is something that the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, we could do some Shields Lake Park improvements next year.
I'm very aware of that park because Rotary did have a big hand in cleaning it up and putting the pier out and, and whatever. And, and it's kind of a hidden gem that a lot of people didn't know. And if you're fishermen like Alan Baki, you'll know that there were, I don't know if there still are, but there were very large sunnies out there. So it was a very fun place for kids to go. So any kind of an addition to the shoreline that we could do something, I just think it's a win-win. And I came from a world where we were never allowed to sell any kind of park property that was once designated park property. So we would eliminate all of the inner workings too that we would have to go through or the city would have to go through to make that happen. But I'm excited because I always did like Shields Park. We had a, a really, really good sign out there. It was so beautiful and it got wrecked, cut right in half. So now it isn't such a pretty sign, but there is one, but very few people know about that park.
Yeah, you're right, Karen. And I think with some of these simple improvements, um, some shoreline restoration with our current property, improvement, improvements to the dock or fishing pier, um, maybe some parking lots, some new updated benches or, I mean, it's obviously pretty shaded. But I think within our operating budget next year, we could really make some nice improvements. And then it's something that we can be proud of to promote to the public and get more word out there and maybe people will start using that more. Um, so just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page or aware of that opportunity.
But the pictures you showed us is the property we would be giving away?
No, that was Shields Lake Park. We would be gaining more line to that.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, we were out there last year for park cleanup.
Yes.
Okay.
So we would have two hundred feet additional on the shoreline to work with for lake access.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't following.
Do we have anyone that would like to make a motion?
Are we gonna make, what would the motion be? A recommendation or what can we do? I'm really excited about the opportunity, but I don't know how, I think, don't we just recommend to the city or how, what is the next step?
Yeah, it would be to accept staff recommendation, uh, to make the land swap.
And you're right, Karen. It would be a recommendation for city council to, to consider that. That's the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission recommendation is to, to consider the land swap as proposed per the staff recommendation.
I'd be glad to make the motion, but I don't want to make them all, so I, I stand in case anyone else wants to make the motion, otherwise I certainly will.
Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, I make the motion that the recommendation from Parks, Lakes and Trails is to recommend the swap of properties.
I'll second that.
All right, hearing a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion? Yeah, I think what I, I'm just going to say one brief thing I would like, you know, I'd like to not hang this up here on this level, but I would hope that we have maybe a little better understanding going into council. What, uh, the overall land swap is like and maybe a, some sort of value, you know, estimation. But, uh, that's all I guess for the added discussion on my end. Um, so we have a motion in a second. Could we do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Miller?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramseth?
Hi.
Commissioner Morehead?
Hi.
Commissioner Guyer?
Hi.
All right, hearing, uh, that, that one is approved and we can move on to, let me find my agenda here. Uh, discussion item A, twenty twenty-one park fees.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman.
Good luck.
All right. Um, all right, so twenty-one, twenty twenty-one park fees. So, and you include in your packet tonight, um, our twenty twenty fees for Parks, Trails and Lakes commission, um, fees for, within our city code. Um, I'll bring this up on the screen here. It's a little easier for, to navigate that way. All right, there we go. Um, so as you guys are aware, every year the city council has to adopt a new fee schedule for the upcoming year. Um, and so each department looks at their fees and it's their opportunity to make any adjustments to the current fee schedule or to rec, so to recommend changes. Um, and this year is different and we're, um, just bringing this to discussion tonight so it can give me some direction. Um, but we do have some new fees that we're going to need to look at and include, um, any fees associating with, associated with the senior center and our field rental process. Um, unfortunately, just with the recent changeover, you know, we're just starting to look at those fees specifically. Um, so tonight looking for discussion primarily on our current twenty twenty fees. We have arts in the park fees, park rental fees, and I would suspect our field rental and rink rental fees are gonna, are gonna change and come back, you know, in November. But just looking for some commission feedback on, you know, are you comfortable with rates? You know, it's been about two years since we've increased rates. You know, is this something that you, you know, what direction do you, or what additional information do you want to see? Do you want a market analysis on what other venues, communities are charging for fees? Um, we need to see if we're going to keep these as is or if we're going to implement any increases or changes to our fee structure. So, um, the next week or two, I'll be working hard on, um, all of our fee structure so I can bring it back for approval. So just really any discussion or thoughts on our, our fees that we currently have. Um, one thing I did want to mention for discussion as well. Last night in our workshop with city council, there was some conversation around when we set field fees, how do we address residents versus non-residents and it, is there, you know, obviously you can do Residents versus non-residents and it, is there, you know, obviously you can do scheduling priorities, but from a fee standpoint. What's the commission's feedback or input on, you know, for field use? You know, do you want to see resident or non-resident rates as um, as you consider that, so. Just looking for some guidance, um, and then again, this, as mentioned here, will come back in early November for approval. And then it will go to city council for adoption. So, looking for any open conversation, direction, opportunity to discuss tonight.
Well, I think in our discussion last night. Am I on? Yes.
You're on.
In our discussion last night, um. We talked about having a non-resident fee and I think that uh. Some small adjustment for non-residents seems appropriate. Um, to show that our residents get something extra for their tax dollars. Uh, they're paying for the use of the field in their tax dollars and then we're. Uh, charging them additional um, to use it, so. I would think it's appropriate to charge non-residents something in addition.
I agree wholeheartedly Doug, it's a good way of looking at it and not to just, you know, jack it up so high that we don't have anyone coming from outside. But like you say, just a little token of something. Because they have put it on their tax dollars.
That's good feedback. My question, follow-up question for you Doug would be, um, I think previously when we said our twenty twenty fees. When we looked at our park rentals, so the park shelters and the gazebo. We did, I talked briefly about the resident, non-resident and we decided to not have something different. Do you think we should or, you know, commission, should we look at implementing a resident, non-resident rate for our park? All our park rentals, so the gazebo and shelters. Um, and the reason I bring this up is I do know that. Two things, one, a lot of communities do have a resident and non-resident fee structure for renting out facilities. And secondly, I do know we get quite a few, I would, if I had to guess, we probably have about half of our. Reservations are non-residents coming in from other communities to use our gazebo or picnic shelters, so. The feedback is, let's look at resident, non-resident rates for fields, you know, what's the commission's in, direction on our other. Rental facilities.
Well, this is Doug again, I, I don't see why we wouldn't have a non-resident fee schedule. For all of the uh, things that we rent to the public.
And I agree with that as well.
And Jamie, what's typically that difference? Is it like five percent or?
Yeah, it's not, I don't know the, it's a certain percentage. I would, I think it's generally, you know, it's not as significant, but it's enough to show. That you're a resident and you're maybe fifteen dollars an hour and maybe your non-resident is twenty-five dollars per hour. It's not a significant increase, but it's just enough, I think that shows that. Residents, you know, you're getting a deal on this because you are already paying taxes in the community, so.
Uh, yeah, and I think it's important not to make it um, so high that it would. Discourage people from coming here because we want people to come to our community, so. Keeping it a nominal, to me a nominal fee addition.
Yeah, that seems fair.
I agree.
Yeah, that's good, that's good feedback. I feel like the park rentals, if we look at that middle section there. Um, the gazebo rental, last year we switched to a half-day rental. Which was up to four hours and the full day is anything beyond that, I think that went really well. You see a lot of groups just wanting, you know. Um, a get together for two, three, four hours, so that worked really well, um. And I feel like the, the price that we have things listed here has been um. Well-received or we're, we're having this, a good amount of reservations, so they're, every weekend's been pretty full. So maybe this is a good, you know, look at this as the resident rate and then maybe a slight increase from here for, for non-residents.
That'd be good.
Just, you know, some thought, I, I feel like we've kind of gotten to a point where it's, you know, it's not too expensive that people are. Reserving the facilities at these rates and then, you know, maybe there's just a, if we want to do the non-resident rate, we just. Take this and, and consider adding on five or ten dollars. For each item. I'll, I'll pull up some, not, given this conversation, I'll look at some of the non-resident, resident rate options and other comparable communities. Um, and can bring that forward as well, but um. I, I just wanted to, that's good feedback and. I think it does make sense to consider that moving forward across all facilities that we rent out. Um, any comments or discussions, arts in the park?
I think, I mean, with the food trucks and everything else, we really didn't have anything to compare to. I mean, is there gonna be any added costs on our end? Uh, due to COVID for precautions, do we even know that yet for next year where we'd want to increase at all or?
Yeah, that's, well, I would say comparatively, our rates are still relatively low compared to other communities and I can share that information over. Um, email with you, it's been a bit since I've pulled a, a full analysis of what everyone's charging, you know, this year. Um, the only impact I see with COVID is if we're still in, let's say we're planning arts in the. Then we're in our current status with COVID right now.
Yeah.
Um, we would likely have to reduce the number of vendors we have just to allow for a little more space in the park. Um, so we could lose some revenue by not having a full park of vendors and if. It's normally sixty, maybe we'll have forty-five or forty, so it's hard to really gauge how many vendors we'll have. That's the only really impact I see is maybe reducing the number of vendors we're allowed to have, so we can spread everything out a little bit more.
Yeah.
Um. You know, I, I think. Yeah, I think, I think it'd be okay to do a very small increase here, um, you know, maybe bump up the full season to a hundred dollars for commercial and. Farmer's market, you know, seventy-five dollars is still, I mean, it's, it's twelve weeks, um, thirteen weeks sometimes. So, you know, it's only seven bucks a night or, you know, it's not a significant.
Sure.
Investment.
Well, you, you don't want to do something in my view that is going to um, result. Result in fewer food trucks or fewer farmers market, marketeers. Um, the more you have, really the better draw that you have, so. I would think we should be careful in not pricing anybody out or making us less competitive.
Right.
Yeah, being that a lot of them haven't had a, a season with us anyways, this past year, food truck wise and whatnot. Uh, that'd be like, you know, increasing them twice, did we just increase those last year?
Um, it's been, I believe, two years since we. And I do know it's also a difficult year if we're still experiencing. Um, COVID nineteen and if, you know, some of these vendors didn't get to participate this year and some of these vendors, you know, rely on this income. Um, as, you know, it's really important to them, so, you know, is it a good year to raise rates? Maybe not and just.
Yeah.
You know, status quo and get through another year before we consider any rate increases for vendors. If, you know, a lot of them missed a lot of their vending opportunities this year, um, and so. That's just something to consider as well with COVID.
Well, I'd be in favor of, of holding the uh. Our fees for two thousand or for twenty twenty-one, the same as twenty twenty, uh, for the reasons you stated. It's been a tough year.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I agree.
I like it's bringing us tons of revenue, I mean, so.
And do a lot of hard work for them to create a product for us to, yeah.
Okay, no, that's really helpful, so that basically what you guys will see in November. Um, what's here on the screen, um, will keep at the same, the only thing I'm gonna look at additional for these current fees will be. Park rentals, resident versus non-resident rate, we're, we're interested in these rates. Shown here as the resident rates and then implement a slight difference for non-resident rates, does that seem accurate?
Yes.
Yep.
And additionally, the biggest piece and, and honestly, you know, just need some time to really understand. What all the fees are, um, the Forest Lake Senior Center, um, that will be working with the Forest Lake Seniors Board on. Um, they do room rentals, they have other, they have member fees. Um, I don't even know the list of all the fees that we have that we'll likely need to include in our city's fee schedule. Um, so, Matthew, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that or if it's just. For between now and the next week or two, figure out what those are and bring them back for consideration.
Yeah, I'm not real sure what their hourly rate is either. I think there was some variability with. Somebody that was just utilizing the space versus somebody that was providing a service, so for example, they had foot care in there. Um, and that was providing a service to this, to the senior members. Um, and I, I believe, you know, if there was a fee charged to that individual, it was nominal. Um, but then, you know, if somebody was going to rent the space for a baby shower, for example, you know, that would be, that would be. You know, obviously full, probably full rate, whatever that is, so, um, I know it was, I believe it was an hourly rate. I, I would just like to say as a, as a council member, as I'm, as I'm listening to you and thinking about the, the. Resident versus non-resident, I'd, I, I'd really like to understand. When this comes before us and you have a proposal, um. You know, how you arrived at those figures, what, what are other communities doing that? You know, um, how are they differentiating resident versus non-resident? Is it a percentage? Um, is it just a flat dollar amount? How do they arrive at that? Um. You know, just so that we're comparable, I just, you know, we, we have residents that pay ta, a lot of taxes in this community and. You know, if we're charging a non-resident a fee that's five dollars m- more than the resident, I mean, somehow that just doesn't feel right to me. So I, and I, and of course it depends upon what it is, but um. Um, but I, I would really like to see a compare and contrast, I think, with comparable communities. Uh, just to see how they're, how they're doing, how they're doing that. Um, I also hear you, you know, the commission thinking about holding fees, which I think is really smart. Um, I think it's also a great marketing opportunity to indicate that you're ho, that you're. Holding fees, right? They'll be the same as twenty twenty and, um. You know, because a lot of folks would probably anticipate some level of increase and I just think that's a real. Great promotional opportunity.
Thank you. Um, so made notes on that and can certainly provide the comparisons with other communities and determine if it's just a flat rate or the percentage base, so we're. Um, comparable with others and, um. So I'll work through the Forest Lake Senior Center piece to that because it's all very new to myself. Um, it's just been a couple of weeks since we've. Been a little more involved, so I'll work through that, but just so the Parks Commission knows that we'll be looking at. Um, the Forest Lake Senior Center fee structure, that's gonna be new and then. The biggest section that I think other additionally will, that will change is that bottom section on the field and rink rentals. Um, again, just with, we have different quality fields, so we have the fields out at Fenway Park, we've got. The three fields, um, we've got other fields out at chilling and cooling camp and belts park, so. Little more complexity with that, given some of the changes on field scheduling, so that's just gonna look different. Um, and again, that resident, non-resident rate, so. Um, this is, this just came from a meeting end of last week, so just again, need some time to really get that research done. But just so you guys know that we'll be looking at expanding out that field rental. Um, and generally what you see in a, other communities, if. You, you pay a little bit more, obviously, for the nicer fields or there's a cost in the fee structure, if you want your field. Prepared for a game, um, there's a, you know, that would be a fee, so that will come forward, um. Just wanted some direction and comment, see if there's any other comments or feedbacks, so I can. Move forward with this efficiently and get you guys what you need to make um, the final decisions on this.
Go ahead. I was just gonna comment that last night, first of all, you and Terry did an outstanding job of presenting. And I think I've only missed one meeting and one maybe short special meeting, but it seemed like I missed an awful lot. And so I was trying to take it all in and have some questions as I shared last night. That the FLOW organization has been. Um. An organization that is very different from other, other communities and has been very generous. I don't think we give the ship away for them, but I also think that we have to work with them and we have to have them walk away. Thinking that the city appreciates what they've given in the past and will continue to. And that we're not just gonna slam them and say we know better. That's my only thought on it.
No, thank you, and that, and that message was conveyed that as we set the fee schedule, that was the next question for them, or what are the fees and again, we made sure to. They're gonna be at the table with this conversation so that they're equitable and that the fees are fair, um, so. You know, I think that's really important for the city to make sure that we're working together with FLOW. Um, we know that they are working on their budgets right now, um. And this is, the intent of this isn't to, you know, charge, you know, significant dollars to any organization, it's really just to streamline the process. And really just the goal is to, you know, hit that, you know, look at what's a fair amount and comparable to other communities, so we'll make sure that. We're um, continuing those conversations and I, I know that they have a FLOW board meeting, um, yet this evening that I know. Our city administrator will be attending and we'll just continue that process with FLOW at the tables as well, um. Giving them the priority scheduling and involvement in the, the setting of the, the fees, um, so.
So we look at them as not a FLOW organization that's making millions of dollars or even hundreds of dollars, but we're looking at that organization. As parents of children that are using the fields and. I think if we keep that in mind and we, we look at that more of a community thing than a FLOW thing, sometimes they get all lost in that. FLOW, like it's really gonna make, be making money for themselves and I've never worked with a hard-working, more hard-working, giving group of people, so.
Understood, and I think, and we'll be working on that with them, um, here shortly, yet this week and into next week. And those. Looked at.
I would like to uh, second Karen's uh, comments about last night's meeting. I thought you did a excellent job, Jamie, and. Preparing for the meeting and presenting and I thought that uh, Terry did a terrific job as well, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, Jamie, one other thing I want to point out on here is I know that you do call out nonprofit. In the arts in the parks booth fees, is that a consideration elsewhere as well, so? Um, you know, just kind of for consistency purposes, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm indifferent to what you decided to do there, just noted it and just want if it was, um. You know, something that needed to be considered in the other categories.
Yeah, that's a good point, we can certainly look at that and, um, I think, yeah, the consistency is gonna be important across the board of if we're gonna. Um, have that, is it applicable somewhere else, so. I'll make note of that and check on that as we move forward with determining fees. Any other thoughts on the fees or any other feedback, information you'd like to see? I'll be, this will be, I'll be spending a lot of time on this in the next couple of days here. Um, there is a timeline that we have to align with the city council. So, um, again, just given the new components with the senior center and the athletic facilities. Um, this will be top priority to get this finalized, um, and presented to, to. You guys again, um, we're gonna do a quick special meeting to approve the fee schedule, um, which we have noted on our agenda. And then, um, this will go to city council, so if you think of anything else, just let me know, but this is helpful direction and discussion.
We're gonna be very busy, Jamie. I can see that, there's a lot, lot to that, uh, taking over uh, these other items, so, yeah, good luck.
Just send me a lot of coffee.
Move on to ice rinks and warming house?
Yes, um, I didn't put on any packet materials, this is just a quick discussion tonight, um. We have winter actually is, appears to be. Um, earlier than we'd like to see it, um, but just in light of COVID nineteen, um, I just wanted to at least get some initial. Feedback or input from, um. The Parks Trails and Lakes Commission regarding our ice rinks and warming house. I think, you know, every year we do our pleasure skating rink at Belts Park and we do. The two rinks at Tower Park, um, obviously I think those are, they're outdoor events, um, you can play within your household. the two rinks at Tower Park. Um, obviously I think those are, they're outdoor events. Um, you can play within your household. You can play in small groups and social distance. So I think the act of like skating or playing hockey is fine. Um, what I'm interested in is, you know, we have, it's park a very small warming house, um, where we usually have one staff on sites and then, um, the warming house and the warming house at Tower Park's a little bit bigger, but it's still a very, you know, small space. So I just don't know with COVID if, you know, if it's safe to open that or if we do, what limitations or restrictions do we have for capacity? Do we keep it simple and not open them this year? I'm just, you know, I, I don't have the answer yet. And I'm just starting to think about that amongst everything else that just wanted to get some, um, input with Parks Commission and, and note that we do have one, we hire staff for this part-time seasonal. And they mostly work on the weekends from about noon to six. And the rings at Tower have been pretty busy. You know, you get quite a few people in there. Um, same with belts, you know, they're I, and I would say with COVID, you know, you kind of have to think in this COVID world differently. People are gonna be looking to get outdoors this year. So we could anticipate even higher use at our rigs, which is more people potentially in and out of the warming house. So just wanna think ahead because I would need to start hiring and staffing and want your input on this.
Well, I, I think if we can do it safely, I would like to see it, you know, done. I'd like to see it open. Uh, I don't know the answer to that right now, but I think that we should certainly do our diligence to figure out if there is a way we can. Uh, that's kind of my two cents on that.
Without the warming house, you, uh, probably will lose a lot of participants because it's hard to put your skates on unless we make some kind of, uh, arrangement outside. Um, I don't know, are there possibility of some kind of heaters outside that could be, uh, used, but that creates another expense?
Yeah, um, good point, definitely. Um, at, at Tower Park, we have some benches outside, but it's cold, you know, on those really cold. It's just, you know, you're, you're cold while you're changing out into your skates. Um, Tower Park, there's really no seating. When our, one thing about our warming houses is our budget was cut years ago. So we don't really, we don't, the hours of operating it are really only the weekends from noon to six. So, um, there's a lot of times people go use the rinks and the warming house isn't staffed and open. So I think people just sit in their car at Belts Park and change out into their skates, um, you know. So, um, I don't know, we could look at outdoor heaters. I think if, to Tim's point, if we looked at keeping them open, we would probably have to look at some, what some restrictions would be, whether it's one family. Belts Park is small, so maybe it's one family at a time or capacity of five people or whatever that number. I don't have the answer either right now, but you know, I think we could look at something like that. Um, and then obviously when they're staffed and open, there's somebody there to kind of enforce and regulate that. But you know, we are investing the dollars to hire staff and, um, would have some restrictions on capacity is what I, I'm thinking just as we, you know, consider it.
You're putting your staff at risk as well. Yeah.
Well, I'm the optimist in the crowd always because I think by that time we're gonna have possibility of having more openness. And I do think with a lot of work, we can create a safe added, you know, area for however we do it inside and outside when they're skating, it's a different story. So it'd be just the warming house situation and being I live so close to, to belts, I've seen many times cars sitting up there and it's not open. And so they're putting on their skates. So I think if, if that would be the opportunity, they'd have to do on the other days, but we go into all sorts of places safe. The stores are making us as safe as we can. And I would hate to see our young people not have an opportunity to get out and get some fresh air and and movement.
Yeah, and I don't, we're not talking about not doing the, the rinks themselves, are we? Is the question really around the warming houses?
The warming house, yeah. Rinks will be open and I think they're, you know, as you kind of shift again to that COVID world, um, I didn't expect our parks to be as busy. I mean, our parks were really busy, busy this year. I feel like people are gonna be out looking for outdoor activities. So you could expect a lot of people and then just the, the fact with the warming houses. So all in an indoor space, you know, you really want to, um, think about if we keep them open, what do we need to do to do that safely? So just wanted some discussion around it because as we are starting to prepare for that season, whether we're ready or not, um, just wanna think about that in the light of the situation we're living in right now. So. And Terry, for joining us, we are just talking about the warming house discussion. If we keep them open this year or not, and if we do, what, you know, how do we do that safely with COVID? Any other thoughts? So Com- Commissioner Miller would like to see them open if we can do it safely. Um,
I agree.
Doug and Betty, I think everyone kind of agrees, try to keep them open. Restrictions we might need to have in place.
Yes, yes.
All right. Carrie, anything else from you?
I agree.
Okay. All right.
All right. Should we move on to discussion, see tenure plan, next steps?
Yes, uh, Terry, you missed, um, uh, let's see here, you missed some accolades from your fellow commissioners for the, a job well done last night. So thank you for leading the tenure, um, vision session. Did a great job with that. So thank you, Terry. Um, and with that, I know Terry and I briefly talked about the next steps and I haven't had a lot of time to digest from last night till today, but there were some, um, you all were there and there were some items from city council as action items. Some things to look at regarding, um, the Aqua building and how a private-public model would work in other communities. Didn't have a lot of time to really digest it all. It feels like it was, um, we just had that. So, but there were some steps from city council. Um, and then Terry and I talked about scheduling a couple of workshops so we can really dig through the takeaways and really start packaging up the final plan of what it is we wanna do with some dollar amounts associated with that. So, so I guess tonight just discuss, you know, anything from the workshop last night that stood out to you? Anything that you had questions on and just develop a plan for our next steps. Terry, if you wanna add anything, I know, um, you wanna get some workshops scheduled and, and I think we need to as well. I just think for me, the next step is really, it'd be helpful for me to identify a timeline to work on this because the next couple of months are gonna be pretty busy just trying to get through the transition with senior center and the Athletic Association and the field rentals. So I'd like to see if we can kind of all talk about what that timeline and expectations are for continuing this plan forward.
Is it us driving that or is it the council that needs information at a certain time?
Well, I, and I don't, I don't know yet. I haven't, I don't have direction on a certain timeline. Um, I know that it's gonna take time. So I think part of the, the conversation last night is some of the council members felt like we're ready to go and it's gonna take time to get through this process. So understanding kind of where we're at and what's the reality, like is it a one-year timeline to, you know, present the plan or, you know, I don't, I don't have the answers either yet, but just I know we wanna keep some of this momentum going to figure out what it is we're gonna package up and present to council. So, um, I think that that's the biggest piece to figure out and discuss tonight is what pace do we go at and what are some of the next benchmarks that we need to set? Cause I, I feel longer than we really think it is. You know, it's gonna take some time to, to dig into this.
Jamie, if I could jump in with just, with a potential suggestion here, um, I think just align with, uh, council's budget season, which typically, you know, kind of kicks, I mean, we start having some sort of preliminary discussions a little bit very late July, but August is when we really, you know, really when we start hitting it hard. So, you know, maybe align your work, you know, to that, to that deadline, you know, maybe, maybe shoot for, uh, you know, like an early July presentation or mid-July presentation to council so that it's on our radar as we head into budget season. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. And, and I know talking with city administrator, um, Patrick Casey, you know, the city is gonna continue to move forward with the tenure plan and he recognizes along with council that we need a little more time in parks to figure out this package of our vision and what that's gonna cost. So the timeline on the tenure financial plan with the city, that's gonna continue to happen. And when we are ready with our components to that, that can be amended and our park work can be added into the tenure financial plan. So we aren't in a, like, extremely huge rush with that. I don't wanna say it's not, it's not super urgent, but also I don't wanna not continue working on this. So we can amend that at any time. And then Kathy, that's a good point for if there's any, especially if there's any considerations for next year, that we'll wanna align that with the twenty twenty-two budget requests.
That's what I was gonna ask as well is could we work backwards from that date? I was gonna suggest the same thing is if our end date is to get something by, let's say, July first. I don't just arbitrarily zoom that out. If our, if our end date is that, then working backwards from there, what are some milestone dates we need? And I think just looking at the trail connectivity and stuff, I think that's gonna take a couple of workshops just to flush out that piece alone. Some of the other things may be easier. We could do a little work offline, like, uh, you know, drafting a, a policy on, on uh, sponsorship, for example, or some of that we could do simultaneously where one of us or two of us or one of our sub-teams could take drafting a policy and it's a little easier, but I, I was hoping, you know, if our goal, if our goal is July, it's really not that far away. If you think about the work we have to do and I don't wanna wait too long where, you know, with July comes and we're still silent in our budget, I don't think would be good.
Right. I agree with that. And it's, it does, it does, it sounds far off, but it's here before you know it. I mean, it's, that's why I think we need to keep some momentum going, but be realistic in the current, um, temporary current work situation with a couple of big system, you know, changes with, um, our facilities that we gotta work through yet in the next month or two. So I think, Terry, would you like to try to still have like a December workshop? Would that be?
Well, I was hoping we could at least maybe pick one of the initiatives and start working on it in December because December is usually kind of a, a quieter month. Because, you know, it's just, it just traditionally is. So could we leverage some of that quiet time with in-between holidays to at least start it? And I guess my question is, do we start with the most complex one? And work our way from there or, you know, because I think using the trails as an example, we're gonna have to identify the trail. We're gonna have to identify where we want it, you know, what that trail is, where the connections are, what we think it would cost.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, I think December feels good to have a workshop session. I know generally our agendas and as you can tell, they're getting, you know, less and less to have on them as we conclude this year for parks. Um, I don't suspect if we can have our one special meeting to approve the park fees for twenty twenty-one, which will be fairly quick, hopefully. And then if we keep our regular meeting for Tuesday, November seventeenth, and if we try to wrap up any business, um, for that meeting, then that can maybe clear for the year, I should say, at that meeting. Maybe that'll clear our calendar then for any additional work um, in twenty twenty for just workshop on our vision. If we don't have any business to address in December. And then that would give us December to pick one of the items, um, to work on.
And I would add as the weather gets nicer, um, you know, uh, Ryan is gonna get a little busier, Public Works is gonna start getting busier. So Terry might be on to something with taking some of those items that are maybe more complex. Um, and hitting those first, at least from a design or planning perspective. So then you can hand it off to, to Ryan, for example, or wherever that needs to go, you know, to get an estimate done, a cost estimate done on those.
I guess my question would be for the rest of the committee, is it better to have one meeting a month where we kind of pick up some momentum and then have to wait till the next month? Or is this something where we would wanna take maybe a couple of days in a week and schedule some time and try to get a little bit more momentum? I don't know. I don't know what everybody's schedules and appetites are.
I just feel like it, like right now, I think what I heard last night was we need to prioritize.
Right.
And then to your point, Terry, figure out what those more complex ones are. I don't even know, like, if you ask me right now, which one would I wanna start with? I wouldn't even know how to answer that. Cause we had six initiatives with a lot of bullets. I think our first thing is to figure out how we wanna
Yeah, well, I think
Like this off.
That's a great point, Buddy. And I think it goes back to all of the community sessions that we've had in the strategic planning. And I think one of the things was trail development. I mean, that was, we heard a lot about trails and needing trails. And we, I think that's just listening to the community and all the information we gather, that that's a pretty top priority. Um, and like to Terry's point, that's gonna take a significant amount of work to really look at what the current trails are. Ryan Goodman has in his, you know, he knows what trail developments are coming up in the next few years, um, in conjunction with road projects. So, um, trails is definitely, I would say in that top three. Um, and also to your point, Buddy of to what are we gonna go after? So I think it's whatever you feel strong about. So if you like that idea of a the Aqua property and that's something that you wanna really pursue and go after, then I think that's something that we, you know, have to start working on to, to figure out what that model would look like. And you know, I know Mayor Bain had commented on that of some more research and analysis on a private-public partnership. So really, I think it's what is, what do you guys, you know, wanna see? And I think we look at community feedback and and just part of what you guys would recommend.
Well, I have some concerns that, you know, new things keep getting introduced without old things being completed. Uh, we have Bell's Park.
Right.
And we got a question last night about Bell's Park. Uh, is that still, is that still something that the commission is working on? And I, I would, for one, would like to get a phase of Bell's Park planned and completed, um, before we start, you know, expanding our horizons on other projects. Uh, we have all the projects we probably need at this point. So let's get something done.
Right. I agree, Doug. My question was gonna be last night that was brought up twice about Belts Park. And I know, uh, Kathy's comment about the Rotary and yes, they can be patient, but these high school kids that worked hard on it.
Yeah.
They're gone. I mean, and so to me, it tells our young people that, yeah, come up with an idea, we'll think about it. And maybe when you have grandchildren, it'll happen. But so I don't think we can do the whole thing. It's way too expensive. But I do think we have to, as Doug said, start phasing in something instead of starting brand new things. But that's just me and joined to Kathy, I agree that there's a lot of days between a month meeting to the next month meeting. And I'm for every other month for sure. I mean, every other week for sure, because you don't lose that excitement and, and work energy that you do if it's a month later.
Yeah, Doug, I'm glad you, oh, go ahead. Did you say something, Betty?
I just said, I agree with that. A month, if we wait a month, you lose the momentum. So if we're gonna really dig into something, then we need to to do a little more often till at least it gets going.
Yeah. And, and that's, I'm glad you brought that up, Doug, because that is definitely one of our priorities right now, I would say. Um, Doug and I talked about it again a month ago to see how we can reduce costs and look at that phased approach so we can get something moving. But we have five hundred thousand dollars currently available to spend and, uh, you know, a pretty expensive project. Um, so you know, if that's part of just the tenure plan and that's one of the number one priorities with the, the trail development, um, yeah, I don't wanna lose sight of that, definitely. And that's ties into our first category of re, you know, the park, um, replacing and improving existing parks and developing that structure. Terry, go ahead.
I, I a hundred percent agree with Doug. I, I do think we need to flush out belts, but I think we have an opportunity with belts too, to look at what are the phases look like and what do they cost? And then look at not only grant opportunities and the rotary money, but maybe that's an opportunity to exercise sponsorship package as well. Maybe there are some others in the community who may or may not be interested in giving and, um, and I, I think when we, you know, part of what we're doing with this stuff is prioritizing for the future as well, trying to get it in for, you know, 10 years down the road. So it's, you know, is, is belts, if we looked at the work that's on the plate right now, would belts be one of our, like, uh, almost like a day-to-day piece that we need to follow through on and get maintenance started on? And then is there one other one that we could start working on as part of the 10-year plan? I don't know. And that's
And that's, I'm glad you mentioned that because that's kind of where my mind is at, is where it's, it's complicated because we are working on that 10-year piece to this. And to Doug's point, let's get something done. I feel like Belts Park is on our forefront of let's get that done. And we talked about, you know, if we look at doing just the community pavilion first as an example, you know, what's that cost? We have $500,000. Can we supplement that with grant funding and start and get that part done? But I feel like that's something that we should be working on ongoing. And maybe we look at the phase two and three and implement that into the 10-year plan or the financial, um, the budget request for 2022. You know, maybe we can recommend a city council that put us down for some CIP dollars for 2022. Um, right now, any of our capital improvement projects, as you all know, just relies on the park dedication account. So, you know, I agree. I think in the next one to two years at the most, we should try to get the belts project done. Um, and maybe that's how we tackle it is next year, we use our park dedication funds with grant opportunities. And Doug and I talked about the DNR grant, and maybe we can submit a budget request for $500,000 or whatever it is in the CIP, um, for the following year. So just getting creative on how we can get that done in the next one to two years. And then everything else is more inserted into the financial plan.
Sounds good.
Does everyone agree and feel good about belts being, let's keep that momentum and keep that conversation going now?
Yeah, I think it's important.
Yeah, we have to do something we say we're going to do.
Yeah, definitely.
You picked out the part of it that the community, if you remember, almost all of them was, was high on the list, the community center with a bathroom. And I think if we focused on just what we could get done now, there's still a lot of playground activity going on around that. So it's not like it's crucial. We don't have anything else there.
Yeah. And Doug, if you want to chime in, but I know that's what we, Doug and I talked about is the playground equipment is still in good condition there. In alignment to eventually in the tenure plan, replace the equipment and improve it. But that could fit into our tenure plan in that replacement lifecycle piece of it. And we started with the pavilion structure. That's where the need is the most, I think, out of that park, along with the basketball courts and tennis courts.
Tennis courts, right. Well, I'm going back to what was said previously. I'm, I would like to do every other week. I think that's, that's key to our getting things accomplished here. So I'm available. I am as well.
So should we, as, because really quickly here, should, should we get some dates set for that then?
Sure.
Cause I think if, I mean, I, I feel like we could wrap up business for this year on November 17th. I don't know that we would have anything coming in after that, that would require council, commission action. Um, that could change, but usually it's a pretty light agenda in December.
How about a Tuesday, the first Tuesday and then the third Tuesday? Are they still far enough away from Christmas and Thanksgiving that, I mean, they're all, they're all busy. But Tuesdays would probably be to stay on the same schedule would be probably good. I don't know where everybody else's schedule is.
That'd work for me.
Terry, you're muted.
Sorry. If you looked at the first Tuesday of November though, do we really want to do that day? That's election day.
No, we aren't, we aren't doing that one.
December.
Okay.
So right now, how, if we, we would do a quick special meeting on Tuesday, November 10th to approve the 2021 park fees. Hopefully that's quick to just pop on Zoom. Um, and then our regular meeting was scheduled for um, Tuesday, November 17th. And to be honest, I don't know what we'll have on that agenda for. Do we, do we make that mostly a workshop? I mean, we can, it's a regular meeting. We take care of any action items and then use the 17th of November as a kickoff to the.
That would work for me.
So then we would have November 17th to start the tenure vision, next, the next steps in this, and that's fine tuning. Everyone's, you know, on the same page. It's fine tuning all of the work we've done and getting more specific into what we're going to present as our final package to the city council that would be put into the tenure plan.
Final package is the money and the actual, it's the specifics on the initiative and what's, what it's going to take to do it.
Yes. And then we could pencil in Tuesday, December 1st and Tuesday, December 15th. Is that too many meetings? Are you guys okay with?
Well, let's pencil them in and see how far we're getting those first few and
Right.
We need to scale back, we can.
Yeah. All right. I'm comfortable with whatever. I just in respect of your time as commissioners and having other responsibilities, so.
Cause you don't have anything else.
Yeah, I, I mean, that sounds good from here. And certainly if something comes up for someone, but I mean, if we all pencil it in, we can at least plan for it.
So December 1st and the 15th, is it five or six o'clock?
Is, has five been working for everybody?
I like five.
Works for me.
Five o'clock has been our most consistent. So if it works for everybody, I would just keep that consistency.
Okay.
All right.
Right.
So I'll, I will, I'll be busy with the fees in the next little, um, segment here. And then, um, we'll shift to kind of some, back to the 10-year planning and get some structure and organization for those meetings so they're effective.
Great. Move to staff updates.
All right. Terry, something quick.
Sorry. Can you guys give us, if you and Doug have kind of said that you think the pavilion is a place to start, can you give us the costs of that? Not, you don't have to do it now, but could you send us an email or something afterwards on what that piece is going to cost? And then with the rotary donation, what would be left there?
Yes. I can do that. Um, yeah. And if you guys think of anything else that you guys need from me, just let me know and I'll send it over. But I have that pretty readily available and Doug and I just talked about that recently, so. Um, all right. So I'll run through staff updates. I know we had a long meeting last night, um, and so I'll get through this here really quick. Um, Terry, just, you know, we wanted, we just wanted a quick update on park maintenance. Um, so I'm just going to show you really quick. We, I think we looked at this once, this not too long ago, but just again, um, park maintenance updates for this year, a lot of the things that Public Works has done. Just wanting to note at the bottom, we did put new trees at Fenway Park. Um, a lot of them had been pretty damaged. Um, repaired the shade shelter at Lakeside Memorial Park. So this right here is just to show you the footing had lifted so much. This is the one right by the swing set. So Public Works came in and fixed that because the shelter was actually tipped a little bit and just a safety hazard. So that was taken care of. And I don't know because of the weather, if this last one is going to fit in yet this year. But, um, Public Works did get a quote to sandblast and repaint the gazebo at Summerfield. So I don't know if you guys saw this there, if you played Magical Park.
Yeah.
Been pretty rough shape. So we had enough budget just to, you know, get something like that done. And so Public Works is working on getting that complete as well. Again, whether permitting, depending on if they'll still be able to do that or not. So, um, any questions on maintenance updates?
Um, would this, would the removing the no dogs allow signs fall in here? Cause I've noticed that it's cedar, belt still.
Yeah, um, we are going to in January,
Silly, but.
Public Works and we're going to develop a new like punch list of tasks. So that would go on something like that. So kind of all those tasks, any tasks that we have. So then when they get their springtime, when they're back up and running the spring, they'll have a list right out the gate of things that they need to do. I just, to be
Yeah, I mean, it's little.
No, it's important though. So, um, but I do, I talked to him about scheduling time in January to come up with a punch list of those kind of maintenance items. Any other questions on this?
So they would do it, I can send you, did they do the graffiti at Shield and fix the dock? Is that on there?
Um, it's not, not yet, but that is, I think they got the graffiti. But we, earlier in this meeting, we talked about a land, potential land swap with, for Shields Lake property. Um, the, we will be looking at doing improvements to Shields Lake Park, the dock, um, with the Forest Lake, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District coming up for 2021. And that would be stuff we could do within our operating budget.
Okay.
Um, all right. And I'm going to, the last update, I know we've, um, been talking a little, a lot about Castlewood Golf Course and just a new, um, you know, with the CARES funding and COVID-19, um, we are able to, we are approved through the CARES funding to put up a new clubhouse. And I know Administrator Casey had taught, spoke to this, that, you know, unfortunately, just given the really tight timeline that we have, um, we weren't able to necessarily go through the process we would like to go through. Um, so even myself, some of this was kind of quick, but, um, we are working on getting, uh, the clubhouse purchased and, um, put up at, um, Castlewood Golf Course. So I'm going to share with you just kind of a, this is a very basic model, um, graph picture to kind of give you an idea. Um, we're going to buy the building and it's going to, someone then can then put it together. So, um, here is where they will come in off the cart path and they'll enter through this door right here. So we'll probably put a sign, Castlewood Golf Course here. Um, no windows on the back side. So they don't get, you know, that's where we're going to, if anything, the balls might hit there. And then this is just going to be a little deck area with tables and seating out here. And then, um, and I think on the inside, there's going to be like, um, the simi, simulators are going to be on the back wall. There's going to be three of them. And we're going to have a bar. I believe it's going to be right in the front here. And I think then there'll be a bathroom in the corner and just some storage kind of back on this side. So, um, it's kind of hard to tell from here, here, you know, that's just the best image I could get to show you. Um, but it is going to look like a nice facility. It's going to allow for social distancing and, um, can be used. Um, so we have a little more room to spread out there. So right now you can get like one person in a little clubhouse shack. So, um, Public Works is kind of leading this project. Um, so let's see here, if anyone has any questions on this, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I just wanted at least kind of give you an idea of, um, what we're looking at. Anything on that? It was just more of an update to show you where we're, what we're doing there.
No questions on my.
Right. And that's it that I have for staff updates tonight, unless there's any other questions.
Have any others? Uh, any commissioner updates? Glad you can make it, Terry.
Sorry I was late. I did see three cars in the ditch. So if you have to go out tonight, drive very carefully. It's getting icy.
Thinking about going out to visit a job site, but I think I might wait till tomorrow.
Wait till morning.
And, uh, Terry lets you finish out the meeting, run in the whole show, so. All right. Anything else?
I don't have anything else. Uh, just move on. Uh, suppose look for a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, uh, in a second. All in favor? Hands in the air.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right. Karen, are you in favor?
He dropped off.
Oh, she dropped off. Okay. All right. You guys have a good one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.